All right, welcome everybody. This conditional use hearing for the purposes of hearing Gabriel Brothers Plaza conditional use 2022-0005. So Charlie went on to turn it over to you for the ground rules.
All right, this is a conditional use hearing under the town center overlay. So it's a little more formal than regular meetings. We'll have the applicant come forward and they can give their presentation. The asset only one person speak at a time, so it's an audible. Get everybody's testimony. Swear in anybody who will intend to testify. So at this time, we'll have the applicant come forward. This is, I'm sorry.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Helen Gemma with the law firm of McNeese Wallace &amp; Merrick, substituting for my colleague this evening. So we are here obviously to present our conditional use application. And this may be a little bit more complicated than the ones that you've typically seen. So let me tell you what we're planning to do. I know we only have 45 minutes before your regularly scheduled meeting. And we'll have to take the time for Solicitor Roush to fix his microphone too as we go through this. I have one of those with me. But just kind of want to give you a little bit of a background about this project. And then a little bit of an overview. We only have three witnesses here this evening. I know there was a lot of paper and we have been quite appreciative of the effort of Mr. Heilmann that's been reported to my colleague, who has been very diligent in making sure that your ordinance is complied with, even though I think we're putting the square peg in the round hole a little bit with this one. But he has been very diligent with respect to that, which is why we're here this evening. So we are requesting conditional use approval for several uses and also for a master plan for this site. In addition, we're looking to modify several of your town center overlay requirements. And as I mentioned, we've been working with Mr. Heilmann because this is a little challenging. This center was built in 1986. That was after the time I left my home in Springsbury Township to go to college. So it's a, to me, it seems like it's a new center because it wasn't here when I went to college, but it really is an old center at this point. It wasn't until 2017 that your TC overlay provisions went into effect, 36 years later. So the age, the current design of the shopping center make it very difficult to comply. And we're also not making the types of significant changes that you would really want to be sure that your TC overlay provisions apply to, which again has made this also challenging. This is indeed a center where tenants are going to change rather frequently. So we're here to show you tonight what we are proposing, which we believe does warrant the grant of a conditional use. You'll see what we have added to the shopping center, very minor things that are mostly for safety and aesthetics. Of four crosswalks, benches, bike racks, some additional screening and landscaping and enclosing an existing dumpster. And you'll also see that as part of our request tonight, we are asking for you to approve some additional future flexibility. So that when we have new tenants that come in, when we make internal changes that are just maybe moving a demising wall or adding fixtures for a tenant, adding a sign, changing the nameplate on the sign, that we don't have to come back to you again. I realize that your time is important. And also, this can be a rather cumbersome process. As we've been going through this process, we already lost one tenant because it was taking too long, which is certainly not on you, but it's just the nature of the beast that we're dealing with here. So we want to have that future flexibility. And I think I'll just point out that your TC overlay has got a great intention is to help the brick and mortar tenants and shopping centers. And we're hoping that what we're going for tonight and asking for is really going to be in line with that. It's going to help this center survive long term. So I know that you're all familiar with the shopping center. I'm going to do a little bit more talking to save the time that it takes for question and answer a little bit here. But it's located 1200 Green Springs Drive, kind of the southern end of the township here. In the MU district, town center overlay includes around 24 leasable units. And your TC overlay, it permits the uses that are in the underlying MU zone, but it requires us to come in here and get your approval for those uses. I think it's also interesting that your TC overlay defines development very broadly, much broader than I think even the MPC anticipates that development would be designed or would be defined. And it includes any manmade change. And that includes renovation, repair, alterations of buildings or structure. So it's, you touch anything out there, pretty much it's falling within what you're calling development. And as a result, we have to go through this process to make sure that we are doing what you want us to do. The township's interpreted the TC overlay to require any change of tenants to come back here, any alterations to come back here. And also, we have to get a master plan approved. And as you might guess, that creates some significant hurdles, particularly for this ancient shopping center. So let me just outline what our request is. And then we've got five exhibits. I'll hand out some exhibit packets. Note, I didn't hand them out in advance because I know you would start looking through them right away. So I'll hand them out as we bring up our witnesses here. But I'm going to give you all five exhibits at once to save a little time. Here exactly what we're asking for, although it is outlined in tedious detail in the documents you're going to get. I am not going to walk you through every single modification, every single use, every single thing here, because at that rate, you will not get to your seven o'clock meeting. But we're going to ask for conditional use approval to allow several uses in the shopping center that are permitted in the MU district. And we have those listed on Exhibit B to our application, which will then be applicant's Exhibit A1. And we're also asking that as part of the grant of the conditional use, that you, that we would be permitted to enter into leases with new tenants who have those same uses without coming back to you again. So if, you know, Use A is permitted and Use B is permitted and we have A tenant in and now we want B tenant in, that your approval would say, "Love to see you Helen, but don't come back just to move B tenant in again." Your approval would cover that. And then we're also asking that the grant conditional use approval for the master plan with the condition that any interior alterations to leasable units and exterior tenant signage would not require us to come back here again for approval of the sign again or approval of the interior renovation. Now certainly, we're going to comply with your sign ordinance. And if we wanted to put a much bigger sign or something that was not allowed under your ordinance, we would have to get a variance for that. But just swapping out names of tenants and those types of things, we would not have to come back again. We're also asking for you to modify some of the requirements of the TC overlay because if we had to comply with every single one of those, we would have to do substantial, substantial changes to this shopping center that just really are not feasible. All right, we think that's going to enhance our success there. And while we're not looking to get taken out of the TC overlay, we're looking for some flexibility as we move forward. By way of chronology, this has been pending for about a couple months now. We're going to put in some of the correspondence that we've had as exhibits, but that we ask you then to approve our conditional use application and the modifications that we've submitted. So as Mr. Heigl is coming up for my first witness, I'll give you the exciting part of handing out the exhibits. Heigl.
Do we want to get everybody that's going to be giving testimony? Yes, John and Randy.
And we also have Tom Austin, who is on the screen, who is going to testify, if you allow him to testify by Zoom this evening, if that would be all right as well. Okay.
Tom, raise your right hand.
Do you all swear by the firm? The testimony should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Would you state your name for the record?
Keith Heigl.
How are you employed?
By Lake Heigl &amp; Associates.
And how long have you been employed in that capacity?
More than 45 years.
And what are your responsibilities at Lake Heigl?
The president of Lake Heigl also served as the licensed surveyor in the state of Maryland, as well as Pennsylvania, and NICE certified engineering technician.
And what is your experience of preparing site plans for conditional use and other zoning applications?
I've been doing this for 45 years in various counties and municipalities.
I assume you've testified as an expert before in municipal proceedings?
Yes, I have.
All right. We would offer Mr. Heigl as an expert in civil site design. Mr. Roush, is it your practice to get a determination of that or just let him proceed and testify as an expert? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And are you familiar with the property that's the subject of this application?
Yes, I am.
Did your office prepare the site plan that was submitted along with this application?
We did.
And since the initial submission of the application, did you revise the site plan to address comments by township staff?
Yes, we did.
All right, we have a number of exhibits that we have here. I'm going to just tell you quickly what we have. Exhibit A1 is our application. Mr. Heigl, have you reviewed the application? That's Exhibit A1.
Yes, I have.
And are you comfortable with what is contained within that application?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and then Exhibit A2 is a July 19th letter that was submitted by my colleague Peter Wertz, responding to some comments from the township with respect to this project as well. Are you familiar with that document, A2?
Yes, I am.
And are you also in agreement with what's contained in there?
Yes.
All right. And then we'll get to A3, which is your site plan. And I don't know, Mr. Heilmann, it's up to you if you want to bring that up on the screen or if you would prefer that we just work through the 11 by 7 document we have in front of us. Mr. Heigl, would that be easier for you to walk us through that?
I have a pointer, I can walk through that. And just, if there's any questions, feel free to interrupt me as I walk through them.
All right, and before you do that, then I'll just ask you, does this revised site plan, Exhibit A3, does that constitute the applicant's master plan for purposes of the TC overlay conditional use submission?
It does, there's four sheets with that.
All right, I'll step back and then you walk us through the site plan.
The site plan is approximately 25.8 acres. It has three buildings. We identify the building to the right as Building A. The larger building would be on the bottom is Building B. And the building to the left is Building C. Camp Betty Washington Road is at this location. And the, that's a state road. The Greenwood is on this side. And the bridal wood that kind of curves through the site is connecting the both and our main access. That is a private road. We've shown the clear sight where bridal wood would intersect with both of those roads. There is also an access point further down at Building A in this location. There are 970 parking spaces that are in this location. And there's a main driveway with green islands on either side coming off of bridal wood to come into the site. The front facades of all of the stores are in this location. There are 31 ADA spaces. We, as had been indicated in the introduction, are proposing additional benches to the existing benches that we have along the front of the buildings in this location. We're adding bicycle racks. And we have an overhand area that varies in the front of all of the stores from 15 to 18 feet wide. And what we've identified in yellow are five plaza areas that have the bench areas, have adequate width and area, do not meet the dimensional requirements that are required in your ordinance, but do allow for the patrons spread out throughout the area to have benches, bicycle racks, trash receptacles, and areas to stay out of the traffic and stay away from the flow. Sheet number two is the site lighting that we're showing. The site is adequately lighted within the area. If you look at our, the actual lighting there, we're asking for some relief because the existing lighting that is currently on the parking lot is higher than what the current ordinance would allow. We've got lighting along the front of each of the buildings. And I want to also point out to you, the large pole sign that you see from the interstate is located in this area. And we have two monument signs, one at this location and one over at this location. Sheet three identifies our plantings. We've got many street trees along Camp Betty. We've got street trees on the east. And we've got planting islands throughout the parking area, as well as green areas and trees along the bridal wood, which is the private access that I had mentioned. In meeting with staff, we also talked about what could we do to further enhance the project in terms of screening or additional plantings. And so the one dumpster enclosure that is at this location, we are adding additional screening in this area between the public road and the dumpster that will also be screened. And then along this area, there's a very large bank. It's approximately 40 to 50 feet from Camp Betty up to the back. But you still see a portion of the wall on Building C. And so we are proposing planting areas along that area to break up the wall and the look in terms of the top of the actual slope. And we're doing that back along the addition. You may recall that we'd gotten approval for the expansion of the Planet Fitness Building. I believe it was back in 2021. That's in this location. And there was a bare wall there. And so we weren't requested to do that when we came through with the LD, but we are to try to enhance that and break up the aesthetics of the wall. Sheet four identifies the pedestrian sidewalks. We've got obviously the sidewalks that I mentioned that vary anywhere from 12 to 18 feet in front of Buildings B, C, B, and over here on A. Camp Betty Washington has sidewalk that goes the entire way up to Mount Rose. This sidewalk again also would continue from Mount Rose up to the apartment buildings. We've got connectors into our facility and circulation around there. In meeting with staff, it was decided to add additional crossings. And so we are adding five painted strip crossings from the parking areas over into the sidewalk areas as part of our request for the waivers. That's an overview, and I know our time is limited, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
And that's all I have for Mr. Heigl. So he's available for cross-examination and questions.
I thought to bringing sidewalks along bridal wood from the sidewalks out on Camp Betty and/or over on Greenspring.
No, there's, I haven't rehearsed that with you, but the elevation from the intersection of Camp Betty up to the elevation of our entrance is a 35 foot of relief. There are steep slopes along this area and it would be very, very difficult to have any kind of sidewalks that would be coming in off of Camp Betty. We do have sidewalks coming in off of Township Road that access into our site. And that's where we were adding some of the crosswalks to add to the safety and the pedestrian access. If you're familiar with the site, the area that is trees, it's natural tree area, there is a 50 to 60 foot difference in elevation between where the rear of our stores are and the adjoining property to the, to the south. While the area itself, we've leveled off as it was built back in the 80s, there is significant relief just between Camp Betty and the site and even the slope down along Greenspring, yeah, Greenspring Road is approximately from this location to this location, 30, 35 feet of relief.
Do we want to quickly go through what the requests are here then?
We have two more witnesses, but if you want to go through with the requests, I think that Mr. Heigl is probably the best to go through with those right now.
If you have more testimony, by all means.
Yeah, we'll be very brief with it. Thank you, Mr. Heigl. We're going to call Richard Ozymek. Would you state your name for the record?
Rich Ozymek.
How are you employed?
A project manager for the owner of the site.
And except for the addition of the new crosswalks, bike racks, screening, the dumpster enclosure that Mr. Heigl discussed, will the site remain in its current condition?
Yes.
Now, the map, the plan includes a proposed dumpster enclosure to the north of Building A. Are there currently unenclosed dumpsters in that area?
Yes.
And what is the plan then with respect to those dumpsters?
We want to close in the, get that dumpster. There's two dumpsters there, I want to get them screened. So we're going to move them up against the building and screen them in.
I'll ask you to take a look at what we had marked as Exhibit A4. The first page of that exhibit, is that an example of what that dumpster enclosure would look like?
Yes, that's one of the enclosures on the site.
And it'll be the same style, material?
Yes.
And did you recently renovate the shopping center to update the facade?
Yes.
Okay, are you intending any additional facade improvements as part of this, this project now?
No.
Okay, and if you turn to what's the second, third, and fourth pages of Exhibit A4, do those fairly and accurately represent the facade as it is today?
Yes.
And how many units are located within the three buildings that form the shopping center?
Tell me, I don't know.
Would it be about 24 units that are in there? All right. And actually, I'll turn you to the, the last three pages of the exhibit. Can you just, is this the brochure that LMS has online for advertising for space in the shopping center?
Yes, it is.
And who are your larger tenants right now?
Gabe's, Planet Fitness, Food Place There, I forget what that's called. And mostly everybody else are little guys.
All right.
Grocery Outlet, is that the one?
Yes, that is, that is there as well. And?
And Fun City is the one we're trying to get in.
And what is Fun City?
Trampoline, jump, climb type place. You see them popping up all over the place.
Now this bro-
For kids, or adults, I guess.
Thank you. Now, the brochure identifies that six units within the shopping center are currently vacant other than the trampoline park. Have you identified any other tenants for some of these units?
Yes.
Who are they generally, what uses are they?
We have a, let's see, what was that one? A beauty school. And I'll tell you the truth, I'm forgetting what the other ones are. They've been sitting on the side waiting for so many months. I sort of don't remember exactly what they were.
Did you lose a prospective tenant due to the timing of this process?
Yes, we did.
And is it your desire to have flexibility to swap out tenants without going through the conditional use process and the master plan process in the future?
Yes.
And also, would you like that flexibility to make alterations to the interior of the shopping center without going through this process as well?
Yes.
And would you agree to provide the township with notice of any new tenant, including how the new tenant complies with the uses that may be approved this evening?
Yes.
Did you review the narrative that's Exhibit A1 and then the supplemental letter that's Exhibit A2?
Yes.
And do you adopt those statements as your own?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Ozymek unless anyone here has questions for him as the representative of the applicant. All right, then we'll move to our Zoom participant. We'll call Tom Austin. Mr. Austin, can you hear us fine? Mr. Austin? Yeah. Can we get him unmuted here?
Good evening, this is, this is Tom, Tom Austin. My audio is not good. I'm in and out, so I'm not hearing all the, all the words.
Well, we can hear you very well. So I just want you to state your name, how you're employed, and then I will offer you very quickly as an expert witness.
I'd also like to ask quickly, I didn't hear when he was sworn in. I did not hear a response. So I don't know if his audio was working then.
Audio is not, not working well.
Okay.
Could we swear him again, please?
Maybe you want to do that again.
Faturage your right hand, Tom.
Yep.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Austin, if you can state your name and your background employment.
Thomas C. Austin. Again, my audio is going in and out. And I think the other members participating by Zoom are having the same problems. So it's-
So it may be that, do you hear me?
Yes, yes, I do, yes.
Okay, so it might be the people who do not have a microphone in front of them are, you're having problems hearing.
Yep, yeah.
Mr. Austin, can you hear me right now if I get a little closer to the microphone? I'm going to take that as a no.
Is that on?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like it is.
It is definitely on here. If we, I would offer Mr. Austin as an expert witness based on traffic engineering. And if we could, Tom, if you could just go through and give your report, which is Exhibit A5.
I'm sorry, the audio is, is in and out. I'm not hearing everything. I have the script here.
She was asking if you would give your expert testimony on Exhibit A5.
Yes.
I'll be interpreter.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Go ahead then and give your testimony on Exhibit A5, Tom.
Okay, we'll do, yep. So based on the, the traffic valuation study that TRG completed for the proposed Fun City development, we concluded that the existing study intersections and site driveways are all adequate to accommodate the future traffic volumes with the Fun City development. We do, we do recommend that Bridlewood Way, which is a private road, be posted with a 25 mile per hour speed limit and a double yellow center line.
All right, I think that, I think that really was all he was going to be presenting for us here. So thank, thank you, Tom, if you can hear me, thank you. That concludes our testimony and I think-
I'm sorry, the audio's in and out.
Yeah, she said that that was what she had assumed you were going to testify to. So we're done with, with your testimony and she's moving on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think we're at the point now where that's what we're proposing. I don't know if the township has any additional comments we need to make. And I don't know, the chairman indicated that perhaps you wanted to walk through exactly what we are looking for. which I think is pretty clearly set out in exhibits A1 and A2. There are certainly a number of modifications. And then our response, exhibit A2, as well as the conditional use. So I will defer to you as how best to go through each of those items. If you want to look at them all individually or approve or deny as a group, obviously, preferably the approved part.
That way your microphone can be heard.
Thank you.
When's that building going to be finished, Mark? You can't hear me, can you?
All right. So that really does conclude what we had, but I'm happy to walk through everything if you like. And I know that Mr. Howman has done a good job of laying out all of these items and what we need, as well as Mr. Luciani, who, hello, I haven't seen you in quite some time. But we can, we can go through that however you would like.
So how about if we do it this way? Are there any items on here that anybody wants to call out and have clarified?
None for me.
Don, any for you? You're on mute.
Yeah, I do have, I have one question. And it may be that this was covered and I didn't, didn't hear it, but I'm unclear what the, what the reasoning behind not doing the public plaza as per the ordinance is.
Mr. Heigl, is that something, if you want to come up here, you can have my microphone if you could speak to that?
I was looking for the actual section, but there are specific criteria with the plaza, I believe, as I recall, minimum size being 500 square feet. There's a 2,000-square-foot requirement of a plaza. And we have a project that being built out. There's really not an area that we could use to place a plaza that would meet this ordinance without substantial movement of existing facilities. You know, we essentially have three buildings with a parking area in between. We do have a green strip area on both sides of the access. But because of the slope that we have to overcome, many of those green areas are actually sloped and not flat enough to be able to utilize as some sort of a plaza. We do have a lot of overhangs that were improved on the facade project that Rich had mentioned. And they're wide. They keep people out of the sun, out of the weather, with benches and bike racks that we believe that it doesn't necessarily meet every intent of what the ordinance outlines. It does meet the spirit of what we're trying to do in having areas for the customers that are spread throughout the development.
Is the plaza serviced by adequate surplus or deficient parking?
We actually, I believe the ordinance would require that we provide 2,000 square feet of plaza. If you recall, the yellow areas that I had shown you totaled 3,790 square feet. So we're almost twice the square footage that's required. It's just the way it's allocated is in areas that are not all following the strict interpretation of what the ordinance would allow or ask for.
Were you asking about parking?
I was asking about parking.
Your question again?
Parking.
Do you have adequate parking?
Oh, yes.
Or have less than required or more than required?
We have more than required. And it's our intent that we work with the zoning officer on each particular use so that, for example, if a tenant comes in and requires more parking, we want to be able to comply with your ordinance and be able to show that to the zoning officer, but not to have to go through the entire conditional use hearing. But currently, we have more than adequate parking.
And this proposed plan does not reduce any impervious surface whatsoever?
No. All of the planting areas are in grass areas. Trees that we're planting are in green grass areas. We are not increasing impervious or decreasing impervious.
Mr. Chairman, if I can call your attention to page one of exhibit A4. It shows 844 spaces being required, and they have 970 spaces currently.
Yeah, I don't think the question was about the parking. I think it was about the extra space in the lot for a plaza.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Not being able to predict the future, we would prefer not to lose spaces, not knowing as additional use may come in, that we want to be able to provide that necessary parking. So we would prefer to be on, you know, on the net gain side of that.
Is there a bus stop anywhere along?
Not that I'm aware of. Where is the bus stop?
It's in front of the food store.
In B? By the, there's a post office box.
There's multiple stops there.
Multiple stops within the development.
Any, anything else on that, Don, that you want to ask?
No, thank you.
Any other questions that anyone has on the board?
I guess I may have a silly question, but you're talking about.
We'll entertain silly questions.
Silly questions. The new user for Fun City is a trampoline. Oh, I'm sorry. So the new user for the 29,000-square-foot space is a trampoline park, Fun City? Do you need to raise the roof of the building in order to accommodate people jumping on trampolines?
No, I believe you have negotiated the lease as to what their requirement would be, but not executed at this time.
Right. We need their minimum requirement for ceiling light.
Just curious.
Seen some pretty crazy stuff on Instagram with people going off a trampoline, probably 50 feet in the air.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's why I asked the question.
For the record, on the rabbit transit schedule, they do have a route going through the Gabriel Plaza.
Does it stop any areas in or around?
It has two stops within the plaza shown on their transit map.
I guess what I'm getting at is, would there be any benefit to, I mean, if there's another stop, is there a stop out in the parking lot anywhere, or is it just up front right by the buildings?
Mr. Ozimek, do you know where the stop?
They're just along the building sidewalks.
Okay. I don't want to artificially stick a plaza out in the corner of the parking lot just to take up some spaces. But I understand Don's concern. Anything with signage that we need to talk about?
At this time, we're not proposing any new signage. If there is new signage with these new tenants, that's not in compliance with your ordinance, we will be back in to seek a variance. But obviously, we're hoping that it will all be in compliance with your ordinance, and that won't be an issue at all.
I will say that I do like the idea of setting this up so that you don't have to come back in here every single time you change a tenant. I don't think that's what was intended by Town Center Overlay.
It was not.
And that wouldn't be my desire either, so.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
So if there are no other questions from the board, then I would like to open it up to the public at this time for any comment. This is for the conditional use hearing for Gabriel Brothers Plaza. If anybody, either on Zoom, click the raise hand button or out in our audience, if anybody is interested in this conditional use hearing to address the board. All right, hearing none. This, this hearing is closed.